Do I hear the approval of the agenda? The financial report, bills payable. So move. The finance report and the minutes meeting. Do I hear a second? Discussion? Vote? Yes. Yes?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education accept the audit report for 2021 as presented. Second? Do I hear a second? Discussion?
You have a second.
Okay. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Kevin Kelly. I'm from Lewis and Off CPAs. We have Jeff Balas, he's the partner on the job. Lewis and Off was engaged in audit the financial statements of Westwood Heights. And we have done so. An audit is, an audit report and the presentation, you should have a copy before you. The district did receive a clean. Next slide. The district did receive a clean, unmodified audit opinion. This is the highest level of assurance that an audit can provide in the district. An unmodified opinion means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and in accordance with GAAP generally accepted accounting principles. We have no control issues to be reported. Next slide. The district did, was required to have a single audit of the federal expenditures. That applies to any entity that has expensed more than $750,000 of federal funds. The district had 3.3 million in federal funds. This year, the nutrition cluster was audited. And there was, there was a clean, clean opinion of compliance other than the fund, fund balance, excess fund balance, which is in excess of the three months allowed by the compliance requirements. So that's a, that's a common finding, especially during these COVID times with all the COVID monies that were received. Again, that's 23% of the federal funds were the nutrition cluster. And the next slide is a depiction of the fund balance by fund. As you can see, the general fund increased fund balance by 575,000. The food service fund increased 182,000. While the capital projects fund operated as intended, the ending fund balance for the general fund is just over 4 million. That's 21% of the spend. On the next slide is a pie chart depicting the general fund revenues. As you can see, the state is the largest portion of the revenue, which represents 77%. The federal is 13% and local is property taxes there, which represents 8%. On the next slide, the general fund expenditures are depicted here by function. You can see the instruction is 56% and support is 41%. That's typical with your size school district. Within two or three percent either way, so the Westwood right in the range. On the next slide is the general funds, the same expenditures except this time broken up by object or object scope. As you can see, the significant portions of, of the expenditures are for salaries and benefits. Combined, the 41% and 27% are 68% of expenditures. That's, that's typical of districts as, as we move more toward purchase services. That kind of takes away from the salary positions of the district. On the next slide, there's, we do a comparison of the budget to actual. The district was under budget, both revenues and expenditures. All in compliance with the state regulations. The next slide is a, kind of describes the largest liabilities on the government-wide financial statements. And this has to do with the pension and OPEB liabilities, OPEB's other post-employment benefits, such as healthcare, retiree healthcare. As you can see, the unfunded pension liabilities, nearly 28 million, and that is growing as the proportionate share of the OPEB liability is 4.39% and that has, is lower than the prior year. These two large liabilities results in a net position, a government-wide net position of a deficit of nearly $14 million. But again, this is not at the fund level and it has no effect on the general fund. So again, the district's received a clean bill of health on the financial statements and we appreciate all the work Rebecca does and the entire staff. The ISD does a, a good job in providing not only exceptional service, but also it's a, it's a good internal control or internal control that provides a separation of duty between the employees. With that, I turn it over to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Go to page six on the general fund expenditures.
Yes.
What would be a high and what would be considered a low on that part? As far as instructional support on those two? What would be considered? You know, there are what you call a, like Osmos, which is one of the top five school districts. So if they had a budget pie chart as such, would there be similar to 41 and 56% per se as opposed to us, even though they're twice the size per se?
Well, Jeff, I don't know.
Yeah, I can help you out with that, Jeff. What we'll see, where we get our peer group information from is at the state compliance information. It's available on the MBE website. It's the rule of three, ten, a lot of where we get it. We can see that rating that's 56 to 40 on here. And your place is talking about moving that 1,500 to 2,000. We would roll in, they could. Your average, your parent group might be, I don't know, but it's probably somewhere right around 60%. 59, 61%. If we get outside of this, this year's night, because there's economies of scale, you have support, but you can have more speed to the same amount of support. So there might tend to skew a little bit higher on the instructions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other question?
Salt, thank you. Want to say that again? Public comments on action items only, please? Okay, do I hear a motion?
According to the finance issue, I make a motion to that the Board of Education approve the quote for IXL learning in the amount of $14,499 for math software like.
Do I hear a second? Support? Discussion?
All right, this is, Mr. Toll.
Yeah, this is a software package that we use currently in the district and we're expanding it to other buildings due to the success of it. And it really helps with the learning loss recovery and will be funded out of some of the COVID funding that we've been receiving.
Thank you, Mr. Toll.
Thank you. Vote? Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, you have Mr. Fikes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Finance B, someone make the motion? I move that the Board of Education approve the quote in the amount of $32,895 for the purchase of Apple iPads.
Support? Discussion?
This is just a routine replacement of lost and obsolete items. We use the iPads in our kindergarten and first grade classes because they're easier for the smaller children to handle and use the touchscreens on.
Mr. Toll?
Roll call.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fikes?
Yes.
Yes. C, motion? I move that the Board of Education approve quote MKJX 299 in the amount of $18,210 for the purchase of laptop, desktop computers.
Report.
Discussion? Roll call, Ms. Ennis?
Battle?
Yes.
Fikes?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yeah.
Motion approved. Six, zero. Motion, was it?
Five, zero.
I'm sorry. Repeat that, five, zero. Motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve to post for the bid, the purchase of a salt truck combo for the district.
Support? Discussion? Mr. Fikes?
Yeah, our current salt truck is aging, has a couple hundred thousand miles on it. And one thing you can't have in a school district is to have your plow and your salt truck go down. If you have to go outside to have somebody plow our lots, it's $3,000 a day. So we are, this is the first big upgrade and replacement. We are planning to keep our old one to support us and maybe help get the parking lots plowed a little bit quicker. We will be posting this on the state website and we'll be coming back to the board with the best bid.
I was reading the packet and it said, was that conclusive that one dealership was complete package for $58,000 per se and the other ones were just a truck? And then the equipment manager, the equipment company was adding that to those bids?
It's, it's actually all the same company, same bid that we got from a local Chevrolet dealer and then we're going to post that. The first one we got was broken down and then the second one was total. But the actual cost came in a little bit lower than I would have thought in this environment.
Motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, Ms. Bridget. Ms. Ennis, I'm sorry.
Roberts?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion on personnel? I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation and the approval of Susie Thomas as secretary receptionist at Hamity High School, Hamity Middle High School pending completion of all clearance and new hire requirements.
Support.
Discussion?
This will complete the reorganization of our Hamity Secretarial shuffle, if you will, and that Ms. Baumann went over to be the Special Ed Secretary. Ms. George is now the Building Secretary. And now we have a receptionist. We've had some of our pair of pros filling in quite admirably over the last week or so.
Roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Fikes?
Yes.
Johnson, you have Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
B on personnel? I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations and approve Trenton Walker as student support assistant at McMonaco Elementary pending completion of all clearances and new hire requirements.
Support? Discussion?
Is he here?
Right, right now, but he's at work. Mr. Walker comes highly recommended. He has his CBD, I think it was, in early childhood education. And he's worked with young people before, so he'll be working right along with Mr. Grace over at McMonaco.
I didn't think Mr. Grace needed any help. Thank you, Mr. Gees.
Roll call.
Roberts?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Johnson, you have Fikes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion? I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation and approval of hire Ebony Thomas as math interventionist effective beginning October 11, 2021.
Support?
Discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Thomas has been with the district for eight years, I want to say. She brings a lot of energy and expertise. She has four-year degree in biology and works and does virtually anything. She manages our student council at Academy West. She fills in helping students in the Plato lab with their math and science classes. And we will be able to use her in a grant-funded position as a learning loss type person as a math interventionist.
Is she here?
She is.
Right here. Okay.
Nice to have you. Welcome. Again.
Discussion? What we just had? Roll call.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
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 Do we have any acknowledgements? Acknowledgements?
In other words, do any of the administrators of the other buildings have anything to bring forth?
At the acknowledgement part?
Yeah.
So the acknowledgement. So we have Mr. Charles Lawler here. He wanted to speak to the board. I'm sorry, I do apologize that he didn't come through public comments. He, he has his program. You come up, Charles, and talk a little bit about it and then I'll finish up.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Is that better? All right. My name is Charles Lawler again. I'm the owner of the Flint Fury Semi-Pro Football Team. And this past season, you guys allowed me to use you guys' new stadium. And I just want to say, we really appreciate that. Because I don't think you guys know how much that actually helps the community. People just look just as football, you know? But these guys are 18 and up and they need activity as well. And I've been doing this for 18, 19 years now. And this is the first time I really felt supported, really. So I hadn't been all over the city. I hadn't been at Atwood, I hadn't been, you know, I hadn't been in a lot of places. So I really felt supported and I really wanted to tell you guys I appreciate it. And I know the guys appreciate it because, you know, new stadium, of course, but they don't know no better, but I do. So that's, that's all I have. And like I said, once again, I appreciate it. And if we can continue the relationship, I would like to do so.
Thank you, Chuck. So with that being said, Mr. Bransford and myself, you know, with community outreach, you know, Mr. Toll charged us with that. And so we had Chuck come in and they brought families, they brought the youth football team, the Wolf Pack. You know, they did their little exercises and stuff at halftime. They brought their little cheerleaders and they did performances on the field. And it was just like a regular, great community situation. Kids everywhere running around and parents and everything. So it really brought a positive light on to the Westwood High School District. One of the guys who owned a company downtown was really impressed, you know? So they gave us a lot of great pub and they just really appreciated the board for allowing them to come in and make this a great community event. It was really nice.
Thank you. Thank you. Both.
I do have one more acknowledgement. Continuing with our community outreach, Elite Training 475, this is another youth league football group that we allow to use our facilities here in the Westwood High School District. And they just wanted to present this to the board or to the community of the Westwood Heights Community Schools in sincere appreciation for your continued support dedication you have given to the 475 Elite Youth Football Program. And we look forward to our partnership each and every year. And so by us bringing these programs here, it actually causes parents to want to send their kids to the Westwood Heights Community School District. It is a great recruiting tool. They kind of actually see what we're all about and we're all about family. We're all about education and growing. So this plaque was presented to you guys as well. So just want to reach out and say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you, good sir.
Do we have any administrative reports? Additional items from the superintendent?
Ladies first.
Okay. Great to meet you.
The special education department, we're working diligently trying to clean up our records for today's audit, so that's been our focus. I do have a count for our numbers. We have 141 students with IEPs, eight with 504s, and we have four being evaluated for special education. Oh, thank you so much. Four being evaluated for special education. And these numbers are reflective of all five buildings, including Hamity L and our special education servicing, which houses our students that are, before they turn three and receive IEPs, but we are responsible for our community children due to child fine. And we are currently looking for another special education teacher to add, seeing how we have increased our enrollment and we have a lot of students to service. And that's what our business is about, servicing students. And so if you know of anyone, please send them our way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, so.
You can pull it down for yourself so we hear you.
Okay. All right. So enrollment is great, classes are full. We have at least 200 additional new students in our building, grade seven through 12. Students are all wearing their masks. No one refuses to wear them. We just do the constant reminders, pull it up, and that's a global problem. You see the signs everywhere. Our security officers go through maybe three to five boxes a day and there are 50 masks per box, so that gives you an idea of how many masks we hand out. Homecoming week has been really, really good. Everyone has participated. Our powder puff game yesterday was at 7:00 PM and it was well-attended. They generated $500 in ticket sales and tickets were only $2. So that lets you know we had a lot of people attend. And a lot of students got in free and we still made that much money. Our King and Queen Assembly is this Thursday during sixth and seventh hour, so that should be really exciting. And our pep assembly is Friday during seventh hour. We will have our annual parade with the floats, so we're hoping that the weather will hold off because they've been working on their floats for homecoming. We will start at McMonaco Elementary in the parking lot area at 5:00 and we will march over to our building here. And so we've been asking for people to donate candy so we can throw candy along the parade route. We really love that tradition, so we want to keep the tradition going. We play Flint Southwestern at 7:00 for our homecoming game. And the homecoming dance is at 7:00 the following day, that Saturday. The theme is social media superstars since everything is social media and it's at 7:00. And because of the number of students we anticipate will attend, it's normally in the commons, but it's in our large gymnasium. Yes, sir.
Have you ever thought about reversing the play, the parade, now that the high school has the football field behind it?
To which way?
Now we go from McMonaco to the high school.
We are. That's what I say, we're starting at McMonaco at 5:00. I'm sorry. If I said it wrong, I apologize.
We always went from high school to.
Yeah, so now we're going to start at McMonaco. So we've been telling the students get dropped off at McMonaco at 5:00. I probably said it wrong, I'm sorry. Long day.
I don't even remember, so you know.
Okay, yep. So we start at McMonaco at 5:00. So we've been telling everybody, don't drive over there because how are you going to get back? You know, kind of try to get dropped off if you can, but we'll march from there to here this time. It's reversed.
I heard you say that we had, and I'm not trying to be facetious, that we had over 200 more students. So that makes our total in the high school roughly 600 plus or 700 plus or what?
Around 801, eight, like eight, 800?
That's tight.
It's a lot. So you guys might want to think about future. It's a lot, so you guys might wanna think about future plans. So, thank you, guys. You're doing a great job, everybody. So we're excited, though. The students are excited. Every game we have is well attended. Everybody's just so happy to be back, so we're grateful for that. All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
You wanna go, sir?
Okay, greetings, everybody. As you know, we opened up Hamady L, we have ninety-four. Who did I? Oh. Oh, my boy's Gary.
Yes, sure does.
Yeah, he does, he does.
You don't need it. No, that's fine.
As you guys know, we opened up Hamady L. We have ninety-four students over there at McMonaco. We have four hundred and forty-eight students. This week has been our spirit week. On Monday, we had crazy hair day. On Tuesday, we have pajama day. On Wednesday, we had hat day. I had this fire out hat, you would have been proud of me. I started to wear it in here. On tomorrow, we have spirit day. That's going to be our PBS kickoff day. And then on Friday, you can wear your jersey or whatever you'd like to wear, or Mix-Mack Day. So we're doing some wonderful things. We invite you to come to our trunk or treat. We need all the support that we can get. We're gonna have our mail bus. Do you guys know what the mail bus is? Well, it is a large bus. We're gonna give out about four hundred books on that day. And we're also gonna have the food drive on that day. That's gonna be October twenty-eighth. So thank you for all your support. And yes, I do need all the help I can get 'cause we are constantly growing.
What time again?
The only thing I would ask out of you, Mr. Grace, is whenever our administrators give out acronyms, that they understand that we do not know all the acronyms that you know. So when you say PBS, what do you mean?
Oh, that's, that's our, that's our incentive program to get, well, we're not trying, our expectation is that all children know how to act. But with our PBIS program, that is a program, that is an incentive program that we use to help students with their behaviors. And, and just trying to use it to make sure that they're doing the right thing. And it's a point system where you can come in the building and you can give them some points. We'll give you a blue ticket and you give a kid, he might just be doing an act of kindness. And you notice it, you could be the custodian, you could be the principal, you could be the superintendent, you could be the assistant superintendent. You can be any one of these people to give these kids accolade for doing the right things.
What time again? I'm sorry.
Okay. Trunk or treat will start at four thirty on the twenty-eighth. And that also will be the time that we will start the food drive. Any questions?
And PBS stands for what?
Positive Behavior Intervention Support.
Look, I knew, I wasn't trying to pressure you.
No.
But she asked me.
You are right, Miss Ira. I get it. But you know, when you get up here, your mind go blank.
And I, and I can remember. I, I couldn't remember. I, I know, I know what it was, but I couldn't remember. So positive.
Yes. Absolutely.
Intervention support.
Behavior intervention support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grace.
Okay, no, thank you. All right, guys.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanna give you an update on enrollment at Academy West. As many of you know, we technically have three different programs at Academy West. We have students that are in the building face to face. We currently have two hundred and thirty-seven students enrolled. We had a hundred and eighty-seven of them attend at least one class today. Uh, we have a hundred and fifty-nine off-site Play-Doh students. Those are students that are from our community, from our district, who have decided that they wanna learn from home. We provide the technology and internet and we do two-way interactions with them that we use as attendance. That is historically around thirty to fifty students. So being at a hundred and fifty-nine, it shows you how many families are still concerned about pandemic issues. Uh, we also have a lot of students who are finding gainful employment in this economy. And many of them who are stepping up as caregivers for younger family members who are at home learning, older family members who are dealing with illness. So a lot of our students are having to adapt to what's going on in the world and they're still taking care of their education while they're doing that. So we're very happy with these numbers. We also have several of our staff members that are stepping up and taking on extra duty in order to do this two-way communication because these kids can't come in the building. So we have to make a phone call. We have to have, it's technically a three-way communication. You reach out, they contact you back, and then you kind of finalize the conversation. So there's a lot of work that goes into that process. Count day activities, count day was today. We had a lot of food in the building. We had biscuits and gravy, scrambled eggs, donuts, ice cream, popcorn, tacos.
Uh, you know, a little head up on that would be nice, okay?
We had kids bouncing off the wall. Uh, it was a fun day in the building. We celebrated our students' learning and our staff being there for our students. So it was a really cool way to handle count day. Uh, we also did drawings each hour in the Play-Doh lab. We did twenty-five dollar Amazon gift cards for one student each hour of the day. So they were very happy about that. And the last thing I have is we are participating in the homecoming parade also with Academy West. We'll have two floats, one for our CTE program. They are building a tiny home on a trailer. And it is quite a sight to see and I hope all of you can get out to, to see it. We have a, a nice group of kids in there working on it, framing it up, putting things together, painting. They're kinda working in two different teams as opposite sides of the house, if you will. So they have a little competition going on and they're sneaking over to see what the other team's doing. So it's been a fun process. And the other float we have is for the We All Belong group. This is celebrating diversity among our students. So students from all different backgrounds and lifestyles can get together and get to know each other and have a place where they feel safe in the building. And they will have a float also. So any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have two things quickly. You may have noticed some of our signage has not been working yet this year. And we are working on that. We had our, our sign company, they're just behind on a lot of their service calls. But we are going to use this as a chance also to update. We have our older logo on some of the signs. We wanna update those logos. We're gonna have a new electronic sign at Hamady L and get the other ones working better. And the second thing I wanna comment on is just how much effort the staff in the district has been putting in. This is, last year was unusual and it's carried over. Our kindergartners have never been in a program. They weren't in Head Start, they weren't in any kind of preschool. This is their first, uh, chance to actually be in a group setting and learn to line up and, and wait their turn and share. Uh, and it carries up through all the grade levels. Our ninth graders never really had a middle school experience. You know, they had about three months of middle school, then they were at home for a year and a half, and now they're in ninth grade. So they're having to, they had to go through all those hormonal changes and everything, and now they're back with their friends again. And we're just seeing a tremendous turnout at all our events, you know, whether it's powder puff, middle school volleyball games. These kids really wanna get out of the house and be with their friends. And, uh, it takes a lot of hard work by our staff to, to manage that process and they're doing a great job. That's all I have.
Okay, do we have a round table? All right, Ms. Johnson?
The excitement when it comes to the kids. And, um, thank you for us being a help to Mr. Lawler. And it was very, very appreciated, your thanks to our, um, high school.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
I just wanna say thank you guys for coming out. Thanks to the administrators for your, um, reports. Thanks for supporting the board as we try to support you. Welcome, Ms. Thomas. I believe it's Ms. Thomas. Welcome. And, uh, glad we can be of help to you, Mr. Lawler. Um, I think you're doing, uh, a service to the community as well. So I think you're to be commended on that because a lot of young men otherwise wouldn't have nothing to, nowhere to, you know, to be, quite frankly. And, and that gives them an outlet. And I just wanna say thank you for that. And that's all I have. Thank you, uh, Ms. Roberts, for sitting in for Mr. Coleman.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Battle Jordan?
Oh, this is all so exciting. And I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of this and, you know, because kids need to see, you know, that we still, we still have things for them. And, and I just love, uh, you know, the homecoming parades and everything that we have for them. And I really appreciate everybody coming out and watching this process and help keeping us honest. All right?
Mr. Fikes? Thank you.
Well, I am glad to be back. I took a trip to Aruba for two weeks. And if you notice my tan, and if you look on my back, you'll see the burn. It's truly interesting to try to get in and out of this country at this time. And it was well worth it because sit on the beach in the sunshine is, gives you a break away from reality and what's going on in the real world. I have nothing but total respect for the administrators. Yes, I would be soft. I'm better when I'm hard than I am when I'm soft. But I have nothing but total respect for the administrators who do a daily job of trying to teach these kids. And teachers who do the job of trying to educate them. And the, and the secretaries and the, and the, even the camera people, even the technological people who keep all this stuff going. Because it is a massive job. It is a massive job. We have a twenty million dollar budget, responsible for almost a couple hundred people's lifestyle. And people have tendency to forget what we are doing up here. We have responsibilities far beyond a regular board, a regular company, a regular situation. The lives that we, we teach help us in the future. The lives that we use to teach help us in the present. And the lives that we use to control help us from the past. Those are the things that we have to live with. Those are the things we have to deal with. And those are the things we should be aware of. And as soon as we forget these things, chaos is around the corner. To prevent chaos, we must educate. To earn, you must learn. That is a saying that everybody should be using. To earn is to learn. That being said, all my tears are dried up now. I want everybody to have a, a happy, uh, evening and life for which way it works. And Ms. Roberts, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Turn it back over to you.
Okay.
Go to football.
Thank you, guys, for tolerating me. I haven't been feeling well, but I'm on my way back. You guys are just absolutely wonderful. It just warms my heart to see all the good things that's going on at the school right now. I just wanna thank every single one of you for the outstanding jobs that you're doing and the things that you've shown today. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Toll. Thank you, Mr. And, um, just keep up the good work. It's showing. And I just wanna say, I'll take a moment of prayer for Mr. Coleman, that he gets a speedy recovery and that he's back with us soon. Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay. We, motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, I didn't get to do my round table. No, I'm, I'm good.